All right, welcome everybody. Let's get this going. This is our June Town Hall meeting always on the last Sunday of the month. And I really appreciate the folks who have joined this call will make it interactive. We'll take all your questions on this call today. And and let's get this started. Firstly, I would like to wish everybody a very happy July 4th in advance. It's coming up. And this actually happens to be our 225th anniversary. It's going to be a very special day for us, July 4th. And it's the it's the one day of the year that I truly enjoy with with the fluttering flag and the celebrations and the patriotic music. And the city of Saratoga, we put on quite a quite a show at the Kevin Moran Park. And I've joined it every year. And it's been more of a pleasure for me as a council member to be there, talking with our citizens and always like to not sit the front row tent spots. But I like to sit down with the people and in the crowd, talking to them. And my wife Sima also joins in. And I truly enjoy this special day at the Kevin Moran Park. And this year we are doing something slightly smaller scale. It's going to be just patriotic music. We don't have the the agenda that we typically do. But still, I think it will lead to a lot of folks showing up and and enjoying a fabulous celebration of July 4th. And hopefully this year we will not have fireworks because California is in a drought. Let's not forget that. And make sure that we are not we are not putting anybody in the way of risk, especially our homes and property. So it was July 4th, seventeen seventy six, two hundred and twenty five years ago, when we declared independence. The the Continental Congress brought a new nation into the world by adopting the Declaration of Independence in Philadelphia. And I've actually been been to Independence Hall. And and I was just in complete awe when I was there many years ago in Philadelphia. And that is and a monument of historic proportion to have some of our our forefathers were gathered there. And to some extent, it was they had put their neck on the line by declaring independence. And the the punishment for mutiny was death. But you know, they they knew that this was the right thing to do. And to some extent, what I seek to do myself in politics is to apply their fearless nature to everything I seek to do. And and this is truly what defines my agenda as elected leader, as a delegate or as a as an executive board member. Or in the future, as your congressman, I would always like to apply fearless politics. Do the right thing. And you know, when we look at the Declaration of Independence, it was a statement of the conditions of legitimate political authority and the proper ends of government and its proclamation of a new ground of political rule in the sovereignty of the people. And that was a very powerful statement. It sent a word out to to all to everyone in the world that here is a new way to run government where it is for the people, by the people. And you know, all the men and women would have the right to liberty and justice for all. And this is I think it was groundbreaking for for that time. And what we have done here in America has been adopted by so many countries of the world. And the inherent nature of what we seek to do is that that we are all created equal. And no one is superior to another. And it's a rule by the people and the powers always rest with the people. And even now, when I read that, why was I reading it? I was reading a book and I saw this reference there. And it's still it still inspires me that, oh, my God. You know, this is what we should all be doing as elected leaders. We should make sure that we are always driven by the people, driven by their needs and doing the right thing because men are endowed with these rights. The the rights are to be protected. Okay, so so that's that's a little perspective, my take on July 4th and and all the things that America stands for. And you know, I believe that this year we'll have a better celebration than what we had last year for sure. I mean, last year we were still in the throes of the pandemic. And and it was sort of very uncertain times last year. But I think it was right around mid-July was when things started opening up for us. We went to the next level and and things started getting better and better for us. And so far, I'm very impressed with how America has dealt with it, with vaccinations, with with in a very regimented manner. We have ruled out not only the COVID nineteen testing, but also with the vaccination. So we are definitely very well situated here today. I would like to briefly talk about about my agenda in running for Congress. And there are quite a few new new folks who have joined this call. And we talk about it every month at the Town Hall Meeting. Now, back in twenty nineteen, we used to have these Town Hall Meetings in person. And actually, somebody sent me an email asking me, when would we get back to having our our face-to-face Town Hall Meetings? And and hopefully it'll happen very soon. I suspect by the end of summer or so, we should if things hold ground. If things are are situated well, then you know, we'll have a lot more of an open economy compared to today. In fact, I think it's already there. Every evening when I'm driving, I notice that I'm having to deal with traffic jams, which actually fills me with pleasure because it seems like we are getting back to some sort of a normalcy. And I I hope that by August to September, we'll start having a face-to-face Town Hall Meetings. I only believe in doing face-to-face Town Hall Meetings because this is where we can truly interact with the people and I get to hear the questions straight up or get the feedback straight up. And it's a very, very powerful experience for me to be out there, talking to people. And in twenty nineteen, we pretty much had it in every part of the of the congressional district in pretty much every city, the far corners of Santa Cruz County, the far corners of San Mateo County, like Lumamar or Boulder Creek in Santa Cruz County, or in our cities like San Jose or Palo Alto, Mountain View, Las Carros, Las Altos, Montes Reno, Menlo Park, Greenwood City. So we were out there talking to our neighbors because we felt that this conversation was extremely important for me. And obviously, we didn't make it last year with our run. But we did better than anyone else in the last thirty years, challenging congressmen issue. And we gained a total of one hundred and twenty seven thousand votes. And you you know, truly speaking, I was dejected with that performance because we thought we'll do way better. And the pandemic was sort of like a problem for us because we couldn't engage with people face-to-face and have conversations with them. And but what was clear was that the branding had that Saratoga knew the reason why the people of Saratoga reelected someone like me. They reelected me with the most votes in sixty four years. That branding has sort of now trickled out into other parts of the congressional district. Because what people tell us is, Rishi, we need your energy in Congress. For the longest time, people in Saratoga have said, Rishi, what do you eat? Where do you find the energy? Where do you find the time? And you know, this is what they have been talking about because we not only run STEM programs like today, in fact, we are running a free coding program for Python programming and AI ML along with Lego Robotics. This is what we have been doing for many, many years annually, every year. And and then juggling a day job in the world of tech. And and then in spite of that, being an activist, taking on challenges in the community. And as elected leader, what I've done is I've focused heavily on the top challenges of the community. I devote seventy eighty percent of my time on focusing on the top challenges. And that has paid dividend because we, in the first term on the city council, we took on a couple of challenges that that were largely ignored by the rest of the city council that led to that historic win, winning the most votes in sixty four years. And that was a huge boost for me because I truly didn't know where I stood politically or how effective a leader I was, I was, or how effective I could be. But that support from the people was a huge shot in the arm for me to to really go out and excel and and continue doing what I was doing in spite of of everything else. And people say, well, Rishi, you don't get along with with San Jose Water Company. Yes, I don't. And I may not get along with the folks because I'm truly out there trying to get along with the people and trying to address their needs. And and if somebody is not doing the right thing, if somebody is not on the right path, then they will be challenged. And and that's the fearless nature of politics I seek to bring. It's not about swimming downstream. I believe in swimming upstream whenever I am given a chance. Because you know, when things are going wrong, they're heading in the wrong direction. If somebody is going down the cliff, doesn't mean that I will go down the cliff as well. So yes, my politics is very unique. And but what I can assure you is my politics is always there to protect the people. And yes, I may not get along with with San Jose Water Company or or with with, you know, these these perps who are out there in our neighborhoods, you know, breaking home, breaking into homes. We drop burglaries by fifty percent. We have rejected, reduced, suspended nine water rate increases of San Jose Water Company. But that's the commitment that I have. And and this is what I will do in Congress as well. That that fierce commitment to be there for people and to address their challenges. And from an agenda perspective, I'll quickly run through, you know, the some of the agenda items we have as a congressional leader, as a candidate. Firstly, to reject all PAC money because I think the big money is polluting American politics. And I would also like to see how America can could be a little bit more ready with the pandemics, with cyber warfare, with cyber crimes, with bioterrorism. And there is a big challenge also playing out right now with Sacramento's push for high-density housing without any urban plan that includes schools, water, roads. You know, it's a very flawed strategy, so I'm against that. And so I've been pushing back on bills like Senate Bill Nine and Senate Senate Bill Ten. I also champion Medicare for All because I believe the healthcare system in our country is broken. And the question I'm always asked is, Rishi, how will you fund it? So we have written policy papers that talk about how we will fund Medicare for All. And firstly, Medicare for All will create amazing efficiencies in our healthcare system. And if you search for Medicare on my website, rishikumar.com, you will find a policy paper. And we are continuing to add more and more data points to that paper to specifically address the concerns and issues that we get around Medicare for All. The thing is, people tell me that there's a long wait time with healthcare in Canada and UK, but at least they have healthcare, you know. And in in our country, it's the healthcare price has grown extremely expensive. And there are there are parents who are making a choice between food and housing versus healthcare. And we know what is left on the back back burner. What does not get priority is healthcare because it's a it's a it's a it's a the symptoms might be there, but you can sort of hold off without too much of an impact in the immediate short term. The long term can be very damaging. The price of insulin in America is seven hundred dollars. And in Mexico is sixty seven dollars for the same exact make, manufacturer and quantity. And that is the sad nature of what's going on with the American healthcare. Obviously, Congressman Esu does not does not support Medicare for All. Because you know, she is the number one recipient of pharma money in United States Congress. And we are when we are talking to people, this fact is now well-known in our district. People are talking about it. People are bringing it up. Yes, she is definitely the number one recipient of pharma money in the US Congress, the lower house. And and that is something that I would never ever do because my allegiance is only for the people, plain and simple. Okay, so so essentially, you know, we are short about forty five thousand votes of getting a win. And the pandemic obviously slowed us down. And I can see some questions coming. Okay, so we'll just please give it a a few minutes. Let me just run through my initial pitch and we'll start looking at the questions. Please send your questions through. And I promise you, I will take up each and every question that you bring up today. No question will be left aside. I've heard that other congressional meetings that happen, Town Hall Meetings, the questions are censored. And if the question is uncomfortable is making members uncomfortable, then they don't they don't take up those questions. I would never do that. I'm going to address every question that you raise in the most candid manner I can. My question is, my my zeal is to bring transparency in in our in Congress. And I will do my utmost to get started right now. But this is what we were doing back in twenty nineteen when we first announced our run. Okay, so there are some key differences between between my run and Congressman Esu's thirty years in office. She's been there for thirty years and I really respect her long service. But it's a tremendous platform and I believe Congressman Esu could have done a lot more. In fact, yesterday I was at a door and somebody said, yes, I don't have nothing. I really don't have anything against Anna, is what the gentleman said. And he says said that, but I believe she hasn't done much. And you know, I I shrug my shoulder, but you know, I have an agenda of getting things done. That's my agenda. And we'll talk a little bit more through the course of this meeting to see how exactly my policies differentiate from Anna. Okay, so let's get going. I'll pick up the first question. And please send your questions over. Let me just put my phone. Let me I should have done this. Okay, here we are. Okay, so I see a question from Matt. Okay, let's get started. Oh, he's talking about a tweet from this morning. Wow, something something that just happened. So Matt says, I saw your tweet this morning about vacations this summer in Washington and you know, I think he's talking about the the number of weeks that Congress and Senate is going to be off. And so what Matt is saying is that he gets barely two weeks off every year. And I'm furious that politicians, I'm furious that politicians are taking off for weeks. Matt, I feel your pain. I feel your pain. We are in a crisis mode right now. There is a trillion-dollar infrastructure bill. You know, I'm I'm pretty sure it's thousands of pages of reading that we need to do. And we need to be in session. We need to be in session until we can get through this pandemic. There are large issues with ransomware looming ahead for America with cyber crimes. And we also need to investigate the origin of the pandemic. And you know, there is a crisis brewing in America. And this is not the time to rest or take vacations. And in fact, you know, when I'm in Washington, I would like to propose just a two-week break that the rest of America gets. And the rest of the time, we should be in session, working for for America, working to make sure that we are fulfilling the needs, the immediate needs of the issues and we are all pulling our our minds and and resources together to address them. And the the one thing that I talk about is bipartisanship. I I truly believe that President Biden is trying that. He's giving that approach a a good good chance. And the infrastructure bill is a good example of that. But but yes, Matt, I I I hear your pain. And that is not something that I would support. You know, I would like to see our Senate and Congress have an extended session and working pretty hard to get us through this huge challenge ahead of us. Okay, so let's go to the next question. Okay, my my name is Josh. I work in the tech like you, Rishi. And I was pleasantly surprised to meet you at my door last weekend. And he says he enjoyed the conversation. And so Matt's Josh's concern is about big tech. And Josh would like to know my policy statement on that. So so I think, you know, I the I I have actually changed my mindset from a few years ago on this one, you know. And and I think America seemingly is heading to a path of antitrust. And you know, just this last week, there were quite a few antitrust hearings that are going to come together now over the next few months. This this is not like a few weeks task. It will take a good few months, perhaps years for this to go through. But but I think you know, big tech has has essentially, they have gotten people annoyed. They have gotten our congressional leaders annoyed on both sides, on both parties, in both parties. And also our senators annoyed. So the antitrust hearings are imminent, it looks like. And you know, if you look at the the shift that has happened is that it has swung from like a minimalistic viewpoint to a populistic viewpoint. A lot more people believe in the antitrust hearings today. And I always thought that the government interventions should be limited. And you know, the the reason was very simple because you know, I think, look at Silicon Valley Innovation, we have done quite well. And and the reason why was because we were left alone to innovate and that has proven quite well. But if you see what has happened in the nineteen seventies, you know, it was or at one extreme that, you know, markets are fine, just leave them alone and and they'll do well. That was the mindset. And then in the nineteen nineties, it swung towards more of a moderate or a center and sort of like a broader interpretation of consumer welfare. And it sort of said that, what do what do we mean by that was that the policies and charter need to be created around welfare of the consumer. And this is how we sort of did a few ordinances in our country to to help that. And now we are moving towards the pendulum has swung to an anti antitrust where people feel that we should be doing something. And and when I look at the congressional hearings, one of our congressional leaders from from Silicon Valley, he calls Congress as technologically illiterate. And I actually have noticed that because if you see all the all the congressional hearings, they turn into spoof videos because our the questions are really, they don't fill me with a lot of pride, like, oh, my God, this is a circus going on in Washington. And 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 it's getting covered on national TV. And everybody is sort of enjoying a good chuckle and a laugh by seeing the stupidness of the questions that have been asked. And and this is not something that delights me. In fact, that is one of the reasons why I seek to run for US Congress because we need some tech savvy leaders. And you know, we and people have asked me, actually, in fact, a couple of days back, somebody asked me at the door, Rishi, that is a concern to me, but tell me specifically, what would you like to do with that, to address that? Good question. I was like, okay, I need to think now, what would I I do? We we are actually writing a couple of policy papers on that. If you go to rishikumar.com/tech, you will see our policy on tech. And now we are beginning to add certain pieces to that. And you will see what we're talking about. But what I don't like is is how Congressman Esu has handled tech. You look at Facebook or Google, they're right in her congressional district. They are right in our congressional district. But but every time, you know, there is a hearing, Congresswoman Esu throws them down the bus, you know, she it's and and apparently she takes a lot of pleasure in doing that. And the thing is, they are right here in the district. So my approach would be to prevent these types of problems going to Washington, working with them to ensure that if there are data privacy issues, we are meeting that challenge beforehand. And by having discussions with them, by meeting with them and inviting them for for discussions to address these types of challenges. I would like to proactively, like, for example, you know, when I have a city council meeting, I try to ask my questions of city staff beforehand. Because if they show up to the meeting and I blindside them, I'm asking them questions publicly that they are not prepared for. It makes both of us look bad. And I know I did that just a couple of weeks back and I had to convey my apology to our city manager. Because in the same way, you know, I think we can do a better job of of working with tech to ensure that their policies will meet the needs of America, will meet the needs of our people. I I call it as tech needs a conscience. And in fact, recently, there was a there was a presentation that I did at the Stanford Palo Alto User Group and spent a good number of minutes talking about how and why and some of the historical viewpoint of how tech has morphed over so many, so many years and where we have landed today. So so this is not what I would like to do. It makes me feel a little like awkward if I'm going to be having congressional hearings in Washington and and taking taking Silicon Valley tech and just making them look very bad. I would like to address it beforehand. But yes, if they are, they are going to do something bad, then I will be sure to call them out on that, you know. Because this is what I do and this is what I've done for many years, which is the reason why I challenge someone like San Jose Water Company. There are several bills in Congress today that have proposed a wide variety of changes to antitrust laws. And they are sort of focused on like Amazon, Google, Facebook. And they are talking about, you know, just like what happened with AT&amp;T and Baby Bells and in the eighties, I believe. And so that's one aspect of diversit化that we are talking about. And then the other aspect is about not not allowing companies to acquire other companies when they have grown too big. And that is something that we need to keep into consideration, but also price fixing when when a giant big tech company can undermine all competition that are using the same platform with the algorithm that they have churned out. And that's a source of significant concern for me when that happens. And now, when you look at, for example, there are different bills happening, in fact, in other states as well. New York has proposed Senate Bill Nine ninety three, which has adopted a European Union-type antitrust approach that makes abuse of a dominant position as illegal. So they are going to get a lot more stringent on that. And I believe you know, a a huge chunk of America has sort of firmly under the belief that with with big tech, they have grown too powerful and something needs to be done. Now, this will all play out this year, next year. And obviously, I will not have much say over it, except in in forums like these. But I do hope that 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 tech will start developing a good conscience. And we need to write a playbook of how tech needs to operate. Sorry, I've spent too much time on this. Let's go to the next question. So, okay. So this one is from Connie. I'm a Democrat. I voted for Anna for almost thirty years. But I can see some key differences with your policies and her. And I can see an energy and a zeal to do things. Can you summarize what is what are the core differences between Anna and Rishi? And why anybody watching this should consider supporting this run? So let's let's talk about a couple of things, right? One is, as a city council member, I would reject land developers when they contributed to my campaign. In a nanosecond, I've credited that money back. And I was not receptive because once you have accepted money from these so-called special interest groups, now you are you are on their payroll. And that is not something that I'm excited or interested in. So and then when you look at how Congressman Esu has sold out to pharma. And I'm not making this up. If you just search for this on my website, rishikumar.com, you'll find many third-party sources that have talked about it. She was looking to increase the patent protection for, for drugs from five years to 12 years. And legislation that Congressman Esu has rolled out has, is, is catering to pharma. And, and then when you notice with the pandemic, she has been very quiet with the genetic drugs. I think this is the time to save lives, not protect profits. We need to roll out generic drugs, generic vaccinations, but Congressman Esu has been very quiet about it. So those are some key differences, you know, I will never sell out, that's for sure. And, you know, I will never, ever accept PAC money, special interest group money. And my run is all about getting things done. So when you look at, you know, we talked about it in the introduction, you know, I was re-elected with the most votes in 64 years for getting things done, taking on the tough challenges, which I will continue to do as your congressional rep. And I believe Congressman Esu could do a little better in that regard. In, in taking up challenges beforehand and ensuring that we don't have, that our people, America is not stressed out. Whether it's big tech or with pharma, or there are some big challenges, California fires, for example, right? So anyway, you know, my, my take is I need to be in front of all these types of issues, not following them. And many of you might have seen the press conference that Congressman Esu had right in the midst of the California fires in Santa Cruz. And I got many emails and phone calls from people that they were furious because Congressman Esu was talking about the dinner she had and the, and the tour with the police team. And with seemingly not much regard to the fact that people's homes had been burned down while people were waiting for an update about the fires. So she came out a little out of touch with that. And, and my take is, when a crisis happens, what we did was we started calling people, offering them help. Is there anything we can do with, with, we were offering them help at like hotel accommodations, trying to make arrangements for them. During the pandemic, we called 86,000 seniors to offer them health with groceries and medications. So this is my pledge. When there is a crisis brewing, I will be in front. I'll be talking to people and we'll be actively reaching out, not wait for them to reach out to me. And the, the final thing is, you know, I wouldn't do like Congressman Esu, you know, this is partisan politics at its finest. She, along with Jerry McNerney, Congressman Jerry McNerney have challenged some of the cable providers and and talking about why they are carrying Fox News and OANN. And I believe, I don't believe in that, you know, I believe in our First Amendment, we need to have free speech. We need to allow all these types of dialogue in America. And, and in fact, with big tech too, you know, there is some level of censorship that is provided. Section 230, we need to look at that one more time. And, you know, I would, I would not be out there challenging our constitution. My policies are purely geared from the people. So we are calling it, it's time to swap an idling engine with an electric car. Congressman Esu has only four bills in 30 years. And four bills that she has sponsored. And in fact, I got that ratified through another congressional member. I said, is this right, what we are saying that she has only four bills? And the person said, yes, the only bills that matter is bills that the congressional reps sponsor, nothing else matters. That's the only proof point. You know, everything else is like, anyway. So, so that's my take. Those are some key differences. And if you go to my website, right on the homepage, you will find some things in there that will provide you the differentiation between Congressman Esu and myself. Hopefully I answered your question, Connie. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the next question and let's see. Oh, okay, let's see. Okay. Okay, we'll just table this one and I, I'm just catching up on the questions and let's keep going. So, so here is another question that as a Republican, I did not vote for you last year. And I only vote for Democrats, but I'm beginning to finally read your emails. And I'm getting a sense that you will challenge the system. I've heard positive things about you from my friends in Saratoga. I was concerned about the letter by Anna to, to all the cable companies. And what's your take on this? So I, I think I just answered the question, you know, we are, Anna, Congressman Esu and I are both Democrats. But I believe in the bipartisan agenda. You know, my intention to be in Congress is not to play partisan politics. You know, I'll be there, you know, I, for example, I, I believe that we should keep nine Supreme Court judges. That is extremely important to my agenda because we cannot have, if the Democrats add more judges, the Republicans will add more judges. It's a never-ending story. We cannot have that. So I'm opposed to the US Supreme Court packing. And I seek to protect American jobs. And I believe the US Mexico, Canada trade agreement was on the right path to bring jobs back to America. We need to stop intellectual property thefts. And I'm all about efficient usage of your tax dollars. So my track record in the city of Saratoga has been to not raise taxes, but to see how we can optimize certain areas to, to reduce the tax burden on our people. And if you look at the very first day when I got elected, I was so in. In my opening statement, I was talking about offering services cheaper, faster and better. And that is what I seek to do. So the big challenge on hand we have is that, that, you know, politicians may have a spend, spend culture, but we have to spend it wisely for the most impactful things. We just cannot, you know, those, those forks that get inserted. We cannot have these types of situations. That's why as your congressional rep, I would like to analyze each and every bill as best as I can and then bring out, you know, what is important, what is not. So we have to be very careful about how we are going to be spending that money and all that. Okay, so. So the next question is from Liz. Well, you know, hopefully, hopefully that answered the question. Donna, thank you so much for bringing this question. And, you know, hopefully that addresses your, your question. Okay, I see Liz has a question. I'm very concerned with your talk about four bills versus 45. Because you claim that Anna has only four bills, whereas I have read campaign flyers from Anna, which states that she, that she has 45. And, and, and my, my big thing. Okay, I think what she's saying is that, that politicians sometimes don't state the truth. Let me just try to sugarcoat it. And it's absolutely okay. And, okay. So, so, you know, essentially, I would like to say this, that the facts are on the website. If you go to rishikumar.com/deceptive, you will see a thorough analysis of each, like email or campaign flyers that Congressman Esu has sent out. And we noticed that Bill she has claimed never got passed. They died in the house. So it's like, it's like shooting a three-pointer, not scoring, but claiming three points. That's not what I would do. And if I look at some of the newbies in Congress, they have legislated some very impactful bills. And, you know, I, I specifically look at the ones who are new to Congress, what they are doing. And I'm quite impressed with the work that they are putting together. Anna has only four trivial bills in the last 30 years. That's a fact. Four bills that she has sponsored. And, and also I believe that we have to hold our politicians to a high bar. And we, we need ethical integrity in, in American politics. And it starts from raising the bar for every politician. And we should not take these types of things very easily is, is how I look at it. And all this, you know, deceptive tactics is basically polluting American politics. The American agenda, it's lowering the bar. And, you know, American people should want better. And what I promise you is, as your congressional leader, I will elevate the bar because ethics is extremely important to me. Integrity coming from the world of tech, you know, it was all about getting things done approach and claiming. If you did a project successfully, you claimed it. Otherwise, you would say, yes, I could do better, right? And the thing is, there's no escape in the world of tech. Everybody knows, right? And if a project bombed big time, if I was flaunting that all over the company, people would be like, okay, this guy is not very credible anymore. So, so please look it up on the website and you will find a thorough analysis of the 45 bills that has been claimed. We have taken screenshots of campaign mailers, of emails. And in fact, one of the emails we noticed led with the 1999 bill, number one in 2020. And I was like, why, why is it a 1999 bill getting top billing? That tells you all. Okay, let's move on to the next question. So let's see. Oh. Okay, so. Bill is talking about a border crisis and the infrastructure bill. And specifically, he would like to see what my stance is on, on these two areas. I'll keep it very short and simple. Firstly, I think the border crisis has been brewing for many years. And I know President Biden made a mistake by saying, come. And that led to a huge problem at the border. And then Vice President Kamala Harris said, don't come. And it's, it's sending very confusing signals. And, and then I've seen, you know, it's like last year, we were calling out all the immigration challenges, but I don't think so. We have, the, the Democrats have, President Biden can do a lot more. He, I think he understands the gravity of the situation. That's why he has put Vice President Kamala Harris in charge. And, you know, it's, let's, let's see how things progress, you know? I, I think Vice President Kamala Harris was also planning to go to the border finally to check things out. And it's, it's, it's a crisis that has gotten a lot worse over the last few weeks. And we need to prevent little children dying while they are being transported to the border. That, that's not a good thing. Any, any day in any country, any part of the world, it's not a good thing. Okay, and then the infrastructure bill, I'm glad that President Biden is trying to create a bipartisan approach. Seems like the Republicans have come on board on this. And then, once again, when you read what happened was President Biden was saying that there are a few other Democrat bills that need to be passed with that. And then it's sort of like started, the bipartisanship became a little ugly at that point. And that's when I think the latest is President Biden has said, no, you know, I, I didn't say that. So let's see how this plays out. I think what I like about President Biden is at least he's trying to, trying to put together a bipartisan approach, which is what he's tried to do many, many years ago, when he was new out there in Washington. And I truly hope that we'll come together, the Republicans and Democrats, and work to address fixing our roads, bridges, ports. And then also rolling out, cutting at transportation for every urban economy, because that's part of my plan. If you go to rishikumar.com/traffic, you will see my plan for Silicon Valley. Creating a mega Silicon Valley and connecting all these far-flung cities with the jobs. And commute time of less than 15 minutes from anywhere to anyone in 21 counties in less than 21 minutes. So we need, we need an infrastructure plan. When we look at the push for high-density housing without a plan for schools, without a plan for traffic, without a plan for water, you know, it's very flawed. So this is the right thing to do. And people say, where is the money? Where we, we have to spend. We didn't think of the money part when we were investing for the railroad tracks in the 1890s. Or when we were doing the freeways in the 50s and 60s. I think it's time we rolled out an infrastructure plan that includes traffic. Okay, let's keep going. Let's keep going. And okay, okay, let's, let's go to let's go to Helen's question. There's talk that the coast mountains is going to have a new congressional district. Also, I live in Mountain View and might be redistricted into Ruokana. Not a bad thing. Voted for you in 2020 and I will again if in your district. Okay, Helen, that's a great point. Yes, the redistricting is going to happen. And we have actually pulled the, one of the political reports that talks about redistricting. We, we got that for a fee. And based on the analysis we have done, it does seem like the district is going to shrink. And I also saw a San Mateo Daily reporter who said that every 10 years, the district has moved down south in San Mateo County. His speculation was that all of San Mateo County would be under one congressional rep. Right now, there are two of them, which is Jackie Spear and Anna Esu. And what he's speculating is that a majority of San Mateo County would fall under one congressional rep, which will likely be Jackie Spear, which means the district 18, our district 18 will move down south. And, and so the sense we have is that Mountain View will likely remain in congressional district 18. And, and then we'll probably add on some new cities to cover the population. So the data that we have seen is the district might shrink from the current 700 or 800 square miles down to 200 square miles. But anyway, you know, all this is speculation. The, the, the redistricting commission is happening. And they will be declaring the results, the, the, the redrawing of the lines. And if, if Helen, if you would like to speak at this meeting, you're welcome to join them and just look up California Redistricting Commission. They are meeting, I believe now, and at least, I don't know how many times a week they are meeting or but those meetings are happening. You're welcome to join them and provide your feedback. Okay, and let's go to Shruti. Been concerned with the dollars going into funding at the new stoplight cameras. How much less expensive to teach self-control and community? Yeah, yeah. So this is about, you know, putting the cameras at stoplights, right? And I, I think they are, we are doing less of that. Because it's sort of like, you know, in a code of law, they're not holding very strong. And so I do believe that crime is a bigger challenge than catching these types of violations. So, so one of the things that I proposed in my city of Saratoga is to put cameras and at least ALPR, ALPR, ALPR cameras when people exit off Highway 85 to see if we can catch these stolen cars that are entering our community. And so that is something that would prove a lot more valuable to our people compared to. So the, what Shruti is asking, how can we return this low-cost solution that worked in decades past? Self-control and community-minded thinking. Yeah, I agree with that. And to some extent, if there's a violation, you go to traffic school. And I did attend one traffic school and it was eye-opening, you know, you, you learn a lot more things because you're driving and you get used to the, the whole model. Sometimes you make a mistake and then you repeat the mistake. And traffic schools are good. And I think we should continue to have a system, but also try to make the system, like Shruti says, a little less expensive on the taxpayer. I totally agree with that. And, okay. Oh, yes. So I see Helen makes a very interesting point. And we talked about the break because historically, Congress is supposed to travel by horses and train, trains to talk to constituents. That's why they are given off a few weeks during the summer. And now they can travel anywhere within three, four hours. They are there right in their district. So it, it makes total sense why we don't need these so-called, so-called vacations. These are, okay, let's do a couple more questions quickly. Talk off from Michelle. Michelle is talking about the pandemic. Is this the new normal that you see, Rishi? And I'm like, the Delta variant is sort of, people have been talking about that and people are very concerned with that. And what I've seen from CDC is that if you're vaccinated, we should be good with the Delta variant. And, uh, what I've seen from CDC is that if you're vaccinated, we should be good with the Delta variant. But, uh, you never know how this will play out. It's better to be careful. And though I do believe, uh, thinking like a technologist, like a Silicon Valley geek I am, I think about the innovation when it comes to, you know, the world is zoomed out and people are like, oh, I'm sick and tired of Zoom. Okay, can we have something new, uh, a better technology? I'm pretty sure that our companies who are currently working. And you, you know how it is in Zoom meetings, like, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me? You know, it's like, come on, you know, it's like, uh, Zoom has worked out really well. They have prospered in a pandemic. They have done extremely well. And it was probably one of the best tools we had in the market. It's time where we took it to the next level and I hope that there is some innovation happening somewhere. Okay, America, David is asking, America needs a new department of ransomware investigations. And, and David, I agree with that. You know, I think, uh, if you look at, uh, the issues we had with the Colonial Pipeline, that was a big deal and, uh, all the transactions that are happening in crypto and, uh, and in fact Bitcoin was the transaction mechanism used uh, to pay out, uh, by Colonial Pipeline, even though our feds have been quite successful in tracking some of these ransomware and crediting it back. I don't know how they did that. But, uh, there are countries outside America who are involved with this hacking. It's a serious threat now, so I do believe that this was something I tweeted last week or a few, few weeks back, that we need a department of ransomware. Okay, and, uh, let's see. Oh, I see, uh, I, I was holding off on this question about, uh, about, uh, the small business. There is, uh, the person doesn't want to be identified, but, uh, very upset with the fines that Santa Clara County imposed upon him. And, uh, as a small business owner. And, uh, I, I noticed in the news that about six million dollars of fines have been incurred by small business owners in Santa Clara County during the pandemic. And that's, I think it's not right. Now let me, let me say this, that I was very impressed with Santa Clara County with how they managed the vaccinations. Uh, and also how they managed the testing. So I did go through the dive, drive-through testing. It was like a breeze. And then also the vaccination, it was extremely well organized. So I think Santa Clara County is one of the top-notch coun- counties of the country. Very well done, very impressive. My hats off to the county supervisors for running such a solid team. But I'm a little dismayed with the six point six million dollars fine that, uh, our businesses incurred in a pandemic. They are barely able to ma- make ends meet. And I hope our county supervisors will credit this money back and not have to go through the drill. Oh, uh, I think this is the final question. Let's see if there's any more. Let me just quickly check. And, uh, okay. So it's about burglaries, car burglaries. Karen says that, uh, her next-door neighbor had a catalytic converter stolen. She's sick and tired. So, you know, you know, essentially, if you go to rishikumar.com/safety, you will find, uh, safety tips, uh, top twenty-five safety tips for your city. There is a little button there. You click on that radio button and it'll show you lots of different cities. Pick your city and download the top twenty-five safety tips. And, uh, my track record, like I said, was to drop burglaries by fifty percent. As your congressional rep, I will make sure that I will be focused to ensure that we'll drop burglaries and crime in every city. You know, if there's a problem, it's my problem as an elected leader and I will work hard to address that. But at this point, you know, please take steps to, to put deterrence around your own home. And also identity thefts. We have a little, uh, flyer there you can download to also how you can protect your own identity from being stolen. And, uh, there are some very simple tips. So there are two flyers you could download from this particular, uh, so, uh, well, there's also the question about water that we are, uh, from Brenda in Las Carros. Uh, our elected leaders are, are failing us and I'm sick and tired of me having to pay for, uh, for, for this water and, uh, drought and conservation is a very long, uh, response, uh, a long, long question. So, so basically, you know, my take is that, uh, we need to expand our reservoir capacity. We need to do the retrofitting of Anderson Dam. Uh, the last Vacura's reservoir under Cantrecaster County. We need to look at expansion of that, the Pecacho reservoir, the Temperance Flat Project on the San Joaquin River. There are lots of projects that we need to consider because Silicon Valley needs water. We have a growing population. And over the next twenty years, our population will definitely grow is the sense I have. And, uh, and so this is, uh, very, very important for me. So, so anyway, uh, so, good, uh. So those were some of the questions that we had, uh, from our folks who, who had sent it in advance from our, from the folks who had joined us and, uh, and, uh, at this point, what we'll do is we'll, uh, wrap it up. If there are any more questions, uh, okay, I don't see any more questions. So let's, uh, let's wrap this up. I really appreciate all of you joining. And, uh, thank you so much for joining this and, uh, great questions and I really enjoyed. And, uh, thank you all. Enjoy the rest of Sunday. Bye.